Will you join us in the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Should we move Chief Mintelow down?
Yeah, we'll have to. Yeah, we'll do that. Okay. All those in favor of the agenda? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ellis update town garage, Mike?
Sir, can you call Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry. Missed the minute, no, I missed the minutes. Well, I was really jumping down there. I was really moving, let me tell you. Okay, minutes for approval. Eight twenty-six, nineteen, and nine-nine, twenty-nineteen.
Make a motion the minutes be approved as presented.
Motion to second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Wait a minute, we gotta have the discussion first. Not getting off to a rocky start here.
I just wanted to-
Go ahead.
...suggest the correction of a typo on page three of the nine-nine minutes. Second paragraph. Select Board didn't care about gas about having an insurance policy for this time of issue. Words should be type of issue in that situation.
Okay, got that correction. Any other corrections? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain, okay. Got that, Eliza? Joe abstains, okay. Citizens comments? No, Laura?
No.
You're the lone person there, Laura.
I had a question. I can go sit over there and be the citizen for a second, but-
You're okay, stay there.
There's Mike Jones, Town of Casson. Did you receive a letter from a resident about the hemp issues?
I got a copy of it, yes.
Yes, we did.
She can't be here, but-
Yes, we did.
Just wanted to make sure publicly that you guys are acknowledging it so she knows that we're addressing it or will talk about it at some point.
Isn't that something that you go to the planning commission, dealing with zoning?
Yeah, I mean, it was, everybody, seems like everybody got a letter, because I got one addressed personally to me.
Right.
I know other people got them as well, asking, why did you let this happen? And personally, it's not my decision, it's, so-
This is on the, I just saw, it's on the, it's on the Fire District One site.
Right.
Who owns that?
They do.
Fire District One?
Who owns the land?
Well, who owns the land and who owns Fire District One?
Fire District One is owned by, by Fire District One.
Somebody's got all-
It's an entity.
It's a separate municipal entity.
Separate governmental entity.
What do you mean own it exactly?
It's a separate entity.
Yes.
It's like the select board, it's a zoning board, it's just a different board.
I just don't think it's on the premises of them, though.
Pardon? Go ahead.
Where does the property go?
Wait a minute. They only own where the well is located. The circumference of seventeen, twenty feet around the building. Where the product is being grown is owned by someone else.
My question to that same thing, Zach, is they have rules and bylaws that I don't know how they enforce. But you can't go spread the manure within so many feet of that water table there. So I don't know what that is, how they enforce it.
The state was down there.
The state comes in?
There was a complaint made by Fire District Number One-
Okay.
-in regards to use of the bridge and then encroaching on the aquifer. The state came in, they did an investigation. I talked to Jonas two weeks ago, at least two weeks ago, and we hadn't, we have not received anything back from the state yet as a response to, were they, have they encroached on it? Because there was other claims about chemicals and stuff like that, so. But yeah, they are governed by some water, some rules. People can't encroach on that property, but, where the aquifer is, but. This complaint is, was about the growth of the hemp and the smell and being in close proximity to her house. And I, and I didn't, I never noticed it before, and I was driving to Rutland, past this place, past Exit Five, going west, or east, I mean, and I noticed it, and I looked down, there's a whole field down through there of hemp, and I really noticed the smell there, so I don't know what it smells like next to the complainant's house, but I just wanted to make sure it was out there.
Well, I would just want to agree with, with the chairman's statement that the, the issue of whether, whether this should be, this product or any other product should be regulated in close proximity to residents is a matter for the planning commission. I think as a, as a resident and a citizen, I'm very concerned that the, the water might be compromised by this practice, the practices she's alleging here. But that seems like that's being handled by the state. So, you know, I think simply to communicate to her that we, we gave serious consideration to her input and we recommend that she address the planning commission on the question of regulation would probably be the proper step at this point.
I'm not sure if she asked you guys the same thing, but it said, in her letter, it said, please acknowledge this letter with a response. So if, if you're asking me that, on behalf of the select board, do you want me to respond to her? Same, we'll refer it to the planning commission and, you know, they're the ones that have to kind of look at the-
Well, for clarity, are we going to refer it to the planning commission? Or are we going to recommend that she submit her complaint to the-
The latter. The latter.
There's, there's rules and regulations against burglizing next to the Casson River, too. That's an issue. I mean, I know it's not our issue, but they gotta be so many feet away from it, so I don't know where they put their manure or whatever, but they may be in violation.
Well, it sounds like the state's already investigating whether they were in compliance with regulations or not.
Yeah.
Let's hope they, hope they follow through on it, yeah.
Jonas is, Jonas is, we didn't bated breath on this one, he wants to know what they say.
Okay. So that would be another element of your communication to the resident that the state is already looking into the issue of whether this has negative impacts on our, on the river and the water quality of the town, water supply.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Moving on to the painting of crosswalks on South Street.
Yeah, I was, I was promised that we'd have the, a quote for what it was going to cost to paint those crosswalks. They didn't get over here to do it. Paul talked to me late today, so we don't have it, so I can't provide anything to you. I wanted to be able to at least give you what the cost associated with that was, because the meeting I had with Keith Molinari, Public Safety Chief at the university, with Paul Egan and Rutland Regional Planning Commission member Devin Neary up at the university. At that point, their head of facilities stated that they'd be prepared for some cost sharing. I know last meeting I talked to you guys and some folks thought that the town shouldn't have any liability and, but I want, I told you I'd come back with at least a quote, and I don't have it. But I did talk to Devin Neary about the transportation alternative grant, which is available. It's open right now until the 22nd of November, I believe. And working collaboratively with the university to apply for that grant and, which would include not only the crosswalks and the signals that, because I gotta quote back, two signals, one on each side of the road, forty-three thousand dollars. So it's, it's not, it's not like we can just reach into the piggy bank and just say, oh, we got some right here. For four crosswalks, it's going to be substantial. If that's what is determined is needed there. Devin Neary put out his traffic counter and his pedestrian counter. He has that data, he's going to share that once he downloads it and ciphers through it. But also part of that would be a sidewalk from the university to Main Street. That strip down the east side of South Street. That, that can, that can be included in this grant, so.
Do you mean the east side? I mean, there's already a sidewalk on the east side.
Yeah, it's just, it's that old falling apart-
Okay.
-stuff, it's all humped and this would be a brand-new sidewalk, is, it's a great way to, you know, start that process and, with the federal dollars, so, or state dollars, what's our federal dollars? But the, the crosswalks, I don't have, I don't have anything for the painting to give you, like I had said last week. It's, we were getting a quote from Ben Diggs, and he just couldn't get over here, so we don't have it. So unfortunately, I can't provide that at this point.
How many, how many of those are you talking, Mike?
Four.
Four. So that includes the rail trail?
No, the rail trail's off, that's the fifth, that'd be the fifth one.
Okay.
Now, there's a bike and pedestrian grant we missed this year, but there may be something that can be done for the rail trail using the bike and ped grant next year. Better, better markings and getting the crosswalks painted. I don't think it's going to cost a lot, Bob. I mean, if we can get it wrapped up into this one, it makes sense, because it's not going to be a lot of money. Yeah.
Now, you were talking about the, you were talking about the warning lights, if a pedestrian comes up, they hit the light, the lights flash, like they have in some other, like in Winuski they have them?
Yeah, it's, it has a sensor, so as a pedestrian approaches the crosswalk, it'll trigger the lights around the pedestrian sign, they'll flash, and you can buy them, so on the pedestrian side, a light flashes so that it'll catch their eye, hopefully, so if they're not looking and they're still looking at their phone as they're walking in front of the truck, maybe we'll catch them before that happens. So, there's all different versions, but that's the, that's the main goal, is to provide early warning, both to motorists and pedestrians.
Joe?
This, I think, is outside the scope of the projects you're talking about, Mike, but when I drive through there, at certain times of the day, when, when the student foot traffic is heavy, I've noticed certain motorists getting kind of antsy about the length of time they have to wait for. And it can be almost a steady stream of students for three, four, five minutes. I, I guess with Laura here, I would ask, you know, if it's possible to kind of do some pedestrian education from, from the perspective of the university, of the, of the students, so that they pause, allow some traffic to go through now and then, and then resume their right to cross the crosswalk. I just fear that someday, somebody's going to be so hot under the collar at the, the length of the weight that they're going to hit the gas and rush through there when they shouldn't.
Great point, Joe. And that was, this was brought up at the last bridge initiative meeting. Charlotte Gerstein's there. And when I asked, when we met with public safety, one of the questions asked was, can the university engage with the students on some kind of education about this? We didn't give into detail about what it would be, but so, part of it would be like paying attention as you're approaching these crosswalks and make sure you have, you're, you're looking up to make sure you just don't walk in front of traffic, because not everybody stops. And that would be, you know, something they could add to about some etiquette about, you know-
That's what it is.
A pause once in a while, so we can engage with that.
Yep, I'll absolutely bring that up. Can I also ask that any financial information that you share with people like my head of facilities could share with me as well?
Absolutely.
Because I hadn't, I knew nothing of any of this conversation until I missed the last meeting, and I happened to read your minutes, so I thought it just took place. So I really would like to be kept abreast of anything if it was going to result in a cost.
Absolutely. Yep.
Can I ask you, Laura, what are your feelings on my comments at the last meeting?
Well, you know, I mean, I have mixed feelings on it, to be honest. I need to really think about it a little bit more. As far as a sharing, I'm open to those considerations. As far as it being the university's responsibility, I disagree with that. I do believe that that is a road, and I believe the university brings a lot to our community. I believe that you have some responsibility to keep our crosswalks up to date in that area, even if, if it wasn't for us, I think that says you wouldn't need those crosswalks. But we do have us, and we do bring a lot to the town, so I don't think we should think that we have to take care of the crosswalk all on our own. That would be my feeling. And as far as signage goes, I think I was told that years ago, we did put some signage up, and the town had us take it down, because it didn't maybe meet the kind of requirements that state signs need to have. So if there's signage that's necessary, I don't believe that's our responsibility, especially if we've already tried it and we were told to take it down. I'd want to look more into the issues of very signage. You know, I can absolutely see discussions around sharing, but not that it's the university's responsibility to keep those crosswalks up. I think the town has a responsibility.
And I, I talked to Paul Egan about it, because he's the history guy for, in all this stuff, and they did try a few things there, and even traffic studies to try to slow the, the speed down to something a little slower than, than it is now, thirty-five.
That one is thirty-five through there?
Yes, yeah. So it is fast. I, I drove twenty-five and I drove thirty-five and just, it is, it is a big difference. I mean, besides the mathematical difference. And, and I asked a question, I said, so in town, in the village, we have crosswalks that run across from the businesses, one side of the road. I said, so why is, why do we have, why does the town pay for those? And it's really, one for the schools, pretty, pretty self-explanatory, but for, for that, I said, really, it's about public safety and, you know, making sure that, God forbid, we have to go, so if we only put a crosswalk there, we wouldn't have had that kid run over or whatever. I mean, we could plan emotions all day, but I, I agree that-
I'm an employer, right? We, we employ people up there. I mean, I walk across that whole lot when I'm going to meetings, right? Don't I have the right to have a safe place to walk across over? Sure, we all do. So, I mean, I just believe that it is, you know, it's in partnership, that we could, we could work on that. But I, I do take your point, I understand what you were saying. I happened to be walking across there today, and classes were just moving. And I did notice that a car was waiting, and boy, the traffic just kept going across that walkway. And I myself was like, well, wait a minute, time to let the car go, right? So I think that is a good message that we could send out, that we do need to be aware that if we just crossed a whole bunch of students, maybe we can wait a second, let a car go through, and then get back in the crosswalk. That all makes sense to me.
Okay. Anything else on the crosswalks, gentlemen?
Just, just-
Joe?
Go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead, Bob.
They have that in New York City, they have timed crosswalks. I mean, you have twenty seconds to cross. It starts, it flashes, it shows the white signal. When that stops, of course, New Yorkers, they don't stop. If the hand comes up, that's all you need for those crosswalks. That, twenty seconds, that would get a whole class across there. You don't have to wait for the person, you see them just walking out behind the building, and all the rest of them are gone, or you don't have to wait till they get to the sidewalk, even though we do, but it's, that's a pretty subtle thing.
Just for what it's worth, I have gone through there before and had students, you know, that are a ways away, kind of slow down and give me a wave, and I'll drive through and give them a wave back, you know? Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Well, this grant will, this starts off with a, they do a study there, so it's not going to be blind, just go by some signs. There'll be some, some research and some discussions that go into it before a recommendation's brought forth, so.
Are you thinking about the short-term solution, painting the crosswalks this fall? And what you're talking about with a grant is long-term?
Correct. And that's, that's why I wanted the, the, the cost estimate to come back to you, so I could get your feeling on it before I, then if you said yes, then I can go to the university and we can talk about what that cost share would look like.
All I'm saying is the weather isn't going to hold. You may want to move it along.
Speaking of that.
That's just bowling, that's all that is, someone bowling.
So yes, and that's why the intent was to have it here for you guys tonight.
Okay.
And it was a failure.
Alrighty, that it for crosswalks, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Move on to Ellis update, town garage.
Okay. So if you haven't been up there and seen where we're at, today they were backfilling the east side or the side that faces the transfer station. So the concrete work has been done. What they found, and I have photos that, if anybody wants to see them, or you can go up there and look at it, for that matter. The supports, the structure, the steel beams are in serious need of replacement. They're rotting, you could poke your fingers through it in some places.
Are you talking about the bottom of the trusses, Mike?
Yes. And the, and the plate that's at the bottom of those trusses. So, taking that into consideration, we had to, we brought in a local vendor who looked at it and said that he could do the work, and as of Saturday, he has said no, he will not. So we were able to reach out to, hold on, Lyle Welding and Fabrication of Olney, and they happened to be able to come up and give us a quote. So to replace eight of them, eight of the stub columns and sixteen of the door jam columns, the cost is going to be forty-eight hundred dollars. We also, during the process of Ellis being there, they discovered that the tracks for the doors, the overhead doors, are rotted about eighteen inches up off the floor. So we have a quote from Overhead Door who came over and replaced the six of them that need it. It's going to be about two, it's two thousand dollars. So we're looking at sixty-eight, no, I'm sorry. What'd they say it was, two thou, so six-four-eight-zero. To added on top of what's already there to get this fixed. But we really can't move forward without fixing the other stuff.
Where would the money come from?
Out of the highway carryover, we're, we're taking it now. I mean, there's some money in their budget for, for the building, and as you, I told you earlier, we are way under. So it's coming out of their unassigned reserve, or surplus, I'm sorry, not reserve, or surplus.
It's got to be done.
I know. Winter's coming and the doors are up, you know, you can, and right now, Bob Ward is, can't work on any vehicles because he can't get a vehicle in the garage, so he's out in the parking lot, working on them, you know, there, and his tools are all inside and-
Any idea when they would complete the work so that he can get vehicles inside to work on them?
What Mr. Lyle said, that he has the next couple of weeks that he could work on this. If we wait until after that point, then he's got other jobs built up, and he's in, it's going to be pushed off to November-ish. So we're talking in the next couple of weeks to get this completed.
Do, do we have the proposal from Mr. Lyle?
I, I have him here for you.
Overhead Door?
Yep.
You could pass those around.
Do you need a motion on that, Mike?
I do, please, because it's six thousand four hundred and, or, I mean, sorry, yeah, six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
You're going to need two motions, aren't you? One for Lyle Welding and one for Overhead Door?
Yeah, and I've got, I think Overhead Doors in your packet.
Overhead Door was in our packet.
So are we paying Lyle Welding or are we paying Ellis Concrete? Because here it says bill to Ellis Concrete, so.
It's like he's subbing off them.
So we're going to pay Ellis for the work that-
Yeah. I mean, to make it kind of neat, that's the way to go, but maybe you can make the motion, paint Ellis Concrete to have Lyle Welding and Fabrication do the work. So that way, if there's an issue, it's covered by both.
Well, that would fall under Ellis Concrete's insurance, too, if there's an issue.
And that was the whole issue behind the other vendor with the job was, you know, who's an insurer, insurer of this? Because they have to jack, they have to jack the building up at least an inch to be able to cut the other pieces out and replace it.
You're confident that Mr. Lyle can do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll make a motion that we add on to the Ellis Concrete contract to accommodate Lyle Welding subcontract for fixing the bottom of the door stud columns and the door jam columns for the sum of four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, you got another one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we award a contract to Overhead Door Company of Rutland to repair, replace the bottom of the vertical tracks and side seals on eight overhead doors, plus any bottom rollers and bad cables that need to be repaired at twenty dollars each for a sum of two thousand dollars, plus the expense for the bad cables.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I say that one right?
Okay, chief?
Right enough.
No.
No.
Yes, sure, yeah, I'll give you mine.
What did I do? I got the one for the car. Here's the one.
I gave her, I gave her one, she's got one. I did three there.
I don't know, there's at least two. Yeah, yeah, we're good.
You're good? Don't have a third one?
Yeah.
You need one, Jim?
Well, I've got, we're all set.
Yeah.
So, to look up what we did in August, calls went up a little bit, probably more so because of the universities are, did more property watches, which I don't know why. Of course, you had the vacations, people were trying to get some last days, but nothing else really stands down on the calls, or else I was about to say. Although fingerprints, that was big. That's because we are doing a lot. Fingerprints coming from schools, from employees, for all sorts of things, from the university. Rutland is one of the main hubs, but they're like two weeks backed up, so they send them all as soon as they got. You know, we charge twenty bucks. Arrests went up a couple, insignificant. Traffic, we saw a lot more traffic in August than we did in July. The violations. And what's funny, we had no actual call for service yesterday in August, but that's because they started the twenty-fourth. We have been busy other weekends. The freshman, freshman group that came in are a little more, a little more rowdier than the last year's. The guys are staying on top of it, we issued out singles tickets. So far, I talked to a few, yesterday I talked to a few Main Street residents, asked them, you know, Hopkins World, if anything going on I didn't know about. They said last weekend was worse than this past weekend. And Paul told me, I mean, the signs missing, there's a bunch of signs still missing.
I'd like to go with you, too, David.
Yeah, I did confiscate a couple of cones that were found on some porch, so I got those back.
If we can, if we can engage the university, see if there's something they can help us with, because those signs are forty-something dollars apiece, and we're seven deep into it right now, and they, every time we're putting up, they're, they're pulling the poles off the ground. So it's not just replacing the sign.
They gotta have something else going on besides people pulling it up. We're down deep, right?
No, they're, you know, it depends. I mean, some of them are just a, a wad of concrete in the ground at the base of the sign, so they, enough of them push it over. But they dragged them from Brown Farm Road to St. John's Baptist Catholic Church and dropped them there, because they probably got a little heavy at that point, but, because they had the whole pole and concrete. So they went back and put it in the next day, the following day after that, it was gone again. Applesauce Hill, they cut the top of the sign off, the pole.
See, I don't know, see, that's not, yeah, see, that's not, I don't know any university since they live up in that way, so that's kind of out of the way, so I don't know about that one.
We can't keep that sign, every year that sign is gone.
Applesauce Hill?
Got to rename the road.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but we're seven signs into it right now, and it's not just the signs, it's the brackets, and it's just, it gets expensive.
Blue Cat Lane, still a hot one?
I haven't heard that one.
They used to turn up missing several times a year at one time.
So we, we only had two thousand people, a couple of them in July and one in August. No issues with the co-op layers, I haven't heard of, from anybody, matter of fact, so that's actually a plus.
I talked to one of them yesterday who's normally disgruntled, and he was pretty nice.
Yeah, I talked to him, too.
Didn't come up, he didn't sound grunted, you know, he was totally grunted.
So that's it with that stuff. We did have a major burglary at the paper shop. A five thousand dollar worth of vape stuff was taken out of that workshop. We did recover about half of the stuff that was found nearby, wrapped up in a sweatshirt. Put the word out at the University of Public Safety saying, because you start seeing some vape supplies, all of a sudden somebody's selling them, a lot of snow, they don't hear anything. They've had a bad string, a lot, you know, the building getting hit, now they get robbed, or get burglazed. Of course, we had that one issue with Mr. Mark's house, a lady woke up everybody that one morning.
Your wife appreciated that one.
She was very impressed by the response.
So, any questions on the report?
This is not on your report, chief, but when I read the minutes on the meeting of, the last meeting in August that I missed, I was interested in the discussion about the- about the calls you may be getting from Fairhaven, uh, perhaps related to changing their staffing hours. Has that, uh, continued?
That I don't know, I should've probably pulled some actual, I will do that next meeting. I'll actually pull the actual agency assists that we go over.
Thank you.
That way I need some more concrete.
Okay.
Um, they've had people in shift, I don't know, I've heard anybody that they haven't had.
Well, I didn't bring that up because the agency assists calls were just about, just a little over half of what they were the month before.
Yeah. I mean, some of those, but they're not always a third, and some of those will stay.
No, I know that, but I mean, you know, the, what caused the spike last month was, or in July's report, was specifically that one issue.
That's definitely, that, that showed more. And I don't know how, what your relationship is with your board, or if you guys talk, or what things around each other, I, I don't know.
Well, I polled the Fairham Town Manager, and he assured me that shift changes, there hasn't been no shift changes. He thinks everything is the same as, so he didn't have an explanation as to why we were out there more. That's what he said.
Yeah, I don't know him, I am really, you know, I stay out of that.
Okay, any other questions on the Chief's report? Okay, Chief, wanna move on?
I have the, uh, we did get, we did get the quote that we got from Stewart's for that, you asking me about the car, um, it was three dollars less than the state bid.
Three dollars.
Three dollars, uh, Stewart's, which we get most of our work done down there anyway. They honor all the free calls and nobody do a good job, so, um, if we go with that and save three dollars, um, the only problem is, we talked about because of the fact of the price, um, we don't have all the extra money to get all the equipment on there. I mean, we can get most of it, we just ordered the, which you okayed on was the camera, which they only had to pay seven hundred dollars out of it, that's a big piece, but the, the grants are not buying lights, that's the problem. And we can't take the lights off the Taurus and put them on an interceptor, we're just not gonna match. Where if we had, if it was the fifteen dollar one, let's say, we could just take the lights off that and change it up. We can't do that.
Based on that, what's your recommendation, Chief?
Well, this is my recommendation, we, and I had Justin price out, um, the leasing option stuff. I know we did it my first year here, then we were able to, if the cars weren't as high, uh, we were able to buy them outright. So, if we do the three-year lease at twelve thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents for three years, we buy the car back for a dollar at the end, but obviously, if you times three that, you're paying more than thirty-five, four sixty, uh, whatever that comes out. What's that come out?
What's the number again, Pete?
Twelve thousand nine hundred and eight and ninety cents. What's that come out?
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine thousand.
Pretty close to thirty-nine.
You're paying about almost four thousand dollars extra.
That's the interest, that's in financing?
Financing.
But, we can easily maintain it. Well, we would have the money to get it all equipped, um, we just pay it up, and then just at the end of the three years, we buy a dollar, we equip it, and then hopefully get rid of it after that. The good thing is, though, the good thing is, I think I would be able to get more money for the Taurus, because that's a decent car. We put a lot of money into that one, the last year, like, probably like four thousand dollars worth. That's gotta go, that's just, we could beat, beat my equipment budget right up. And we talked about whether, uh, whether the board was going to allow that car to go constable or not, they hadn't even brought it up to me. I'm just saying it, my goal is to sell it, but if you guys decide to, you know, that's your.
Well, if you sell it, then that money gets rolled back into the-
Correct.
-capital reserve account for cars, right?
Correct. So, I will then look for somebody that can give me some cash for that.
You got any clue what you think it's worth?
Oh, it's gonna be worth more than Apollo. Um, I'm guessing between four and five thousand.
Well, that's enough to want to put it back in the reserve, yeah.
That's a proper change.
Okay, is there a motion, gentlemen?
Are you recommending the state bid or the other? It doesn't make a difference, I mean, Stewart's does it, what's this, three dollars state or Stewart's?
Stewart's, I think.
Stewart's.
Oh, that is, okay.
Stewart's is thirty-five, four sixty.
Okay.
The state is thirty-five, four sixty-three.
But, you don't have, uh, money in your budget to both buy a car and equip it?
Correct, because I had thirty-four thousand for the car.
But you could lease a car and equip it.
Correct.
What do you have in your reserve account, Pete?
Thirty-four thousand.
Could you sell the, the Taurus and use that money to equip it, so you don't pay him four thousand dollars in interest?
We need ten thousand dollars to equip it.
I would move we lease a car for three years.
Is it second?
I'll second that. Do we need a dollar amount in that motion?
So, the total amount would be, add, so, are you going with the Stewart's, four sixty or the state?
The lease.
Oh, I'm sorry, the lease, so, three-year lease, so, so that's twelve thousand nine hundred, wow, I mean, that, that's something that, uh, Maloney owns a ranges, so, then you have the initial lease, the first-year payment, plus another, and I could cover that with a thirty-four, plus another ten thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. That would be the equipment. So, it comes out to twenty-two, actually twenty-three, sixty-five.
Not to exceed twenty-four thousand.
You got that?
A lot of numbers thrown around here.
Add twelve thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents, and then add ten thousand one hundred and sixty-seven point eight-five, eighty-five cents.
Twenty-three, seventy-six, seventy-five.
With the understanding that the, uh, second amount, the ten thousand plus, is gonna be covered by your budget, well, in both, both of it.
It's gonna, it's gonna come out of the capital reserve, the thirty-four thousand, all that's gonna come out of the capital reserve, so, nine, whatever, nine thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
Got the motion and, got the second?
Yeah, you seconded it right there.
I did.
You did. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to, as the Chief has stated, to, uh, sell the old car?
Go.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, dollar amount, no less than, or we set a reserve for?
So, here's my question, I know you can vote on it, you want, you go at, go at it and start looking for it, start looking for some buyers and, and I'll advertise it, as soon as I get a good-
There's a motion in the second to sell.
Or do you want me to come back here and say, "This is what I can get"?
No, I said, "We set a reserve right now," and-
We can't tell him how much he can sell it for, he's gotta see what he can get.
I, I have to feel out what it is.
But, but set a low reserve, they don't sell for less than three thousand dollars.
He's not gonna sell it before he comes back to us. How about that?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, once I get everything back, I'll come back to the board and I'll say, "This is what I can get for it."
We're just giving them permission to go out and-
Yeah, this one.
-get some buyers lined up.
Okay, is that the sense of the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
What's the timeframe?
Okay.
What's the timeframe on the new car, Pete? Roughly?
Oh, if you order, let's say we order next week, it probably would be, like, normally we order in August and we get it back by October, so, probably hopefully, depending on weather.
It'll be before bad weather.
Yeah. In the meantime, we'll, we'll be all right.
I guess the only thing I'm not clear on is, is we're leasing the car, so where are you getting it from?
Well, that's my question, you want to get it from Stewart's, which is three dollars less, or go with state bid?
What?
Well, I, I would recommend you get it from Stewart's, since they're doing the service on it, I mean, that's kind of a nice gesture.
Even though they still do it, even, they still honor the state cars.
Yeah, you have to honor it, yeah.
So, that's, I can do that.
Sure, keep the business looking, if you can.
Why not?
Yeah, so, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Won't hurt them if you buy a car from them.
That take care of it, Chief?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask for clarification?
Pardon?
What is Stewart's?
Stewart's.
John C. Stewart, some.
John C., John C. Stewart and some, cutting some. Manager's brief update.
He threw the brief in there.
It's really not as thick as it is sometimes.
There's not, there's not much on here, because there's not much on here for any action. The rest of it, the rest of it, of course, we can read.
Good news, um, Ellery Solomon, um, has the money now for that, uh, project at the transfer station for stormwater, um, which is gonna be a sizable amount of money. Um, so, now, she's helping solicit, um, some people for engineers. Um, so, that's, that's a good news, that's good news for me, anyway.
Okay, any questions on that, gentlemen? Seeing none, next item, Mike?
Uh, the big one is, and I have a letter, and I haven't given it to you yet, because I have to read through it myself, um, but it was, uh, MHD Solar, um, I gave that in the last report, I let you know, I gave it to Lois Baldwin, and she's reviewed it, and she came back to me, um, with her opinion, um, which there's some valid points in there. So, I ended up, today I called the state, um, to ask them about the old town dump, which is above the site where they're gonna put the solar, so I'm on, uh, if you're looking at this, I'm on page two, top of the page. Um, they, they didn't have an answer for me today, and she didn't know, the lady I talked to, um, didn't have, didn't know who she was gonna pass me off to, um, to talk about, is there any requirements that the town had put on them about that old, uh, dump, like, monitoring wells or whatever? So, we looked through an online, uh, list of sites, and it's not listed. The old town landfill's listed, but the town dump is not listed. So, uh, until I get an answer back, i- if there's any kind of, uh, requirements, and I recommend to the board to go, go forward with this, this lease with the MHD Solar, we wanna make sure that we're not opening ourselves to liability. Um, so, and the MHD Solar understands that, and, um, but I'll, I'll get some more answers and, uh, I'll have the Lois's legal opinion and an answer back on, if we have any requirements about that old town dump, that could, uh, deep-six the whole thing. Um, now, going back, I'm sorry, go back to the first page at the very bottom, Sandlot Solar, um, the construction of that five hundred kilowatt solar array by, by Humboldt Forge, um, is probably well past fifty percent at this point. When Jim and I went out there, they were saying they're fifty percent, so, um, that's, that's moved forward. I talked to Janet Curry from the Planning Commission, she's reached out to the owner and engaged them on some information that she wanted. So, it's going forward, we didn't know about it, but it's, it's, it's gonna be there. Uh, we don't know who their off-takers are gonna be though.
The Joe Bruno.
And all the rest of this stuff is just, um, informational.
I thought you had one other there.
Looking.
Highway Garage, Ellis Concrete, we did that, did that, so we're all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, any of your questions, gentlemen, that's it?
Okay. Select Board comments, Joe?
Yes, uh, I, I just want to, uh, make sure that, uh, the record shows that, um, our chairman has been, uh, chosen to receive the Vermont League of City from Towns Lifetime Achievement Award, and, uh, you were all invited to attend reception at four-thirty PM on October second. This is your nomination letter, Jim.
Thank you, Joe.
It'll, it'll make you blush.
I'm sure it will.
At, at, on October second.
I wonder who you're talking about.
When Jim will be presented with his award, and, uh, just wanna congratulate you, Jim, for deserving this.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else, Joe?
No.
Bob?
Um, an abandoned house, is that a health inspector?
It might or might not be.
Might or might not be.
That's, that's the accurate answer.
Okay.
If it's, if it's a health hazard, and it could be if it's not, um, either boarded up, so the kids and animals and so on, then it would be.
That was-
So, you wanna get to me on that one?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, anything else, Bob?
Um, who changes out the transfer station boxes up to the transfer station, Mike?
Jim Bruno.
He comes in, if, if the box fills up halfway through the day, he has to come in and change it out?
No, he, they usually, he tries to set it up so Chris doesn't have to call somebody in, it's usually try to set them all up.
Kinda squeeze it through the, the rest of the day?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That was, for some reason, that was kinda brought up to me, so.
Um, well, our operator is, is gonna take his, uh, his written test for his CDL now, he's been studying, so he can-
Sure.
-at least begin to drive under somebody else's tutelage.
Yeah, okay.
Is that it, Bob?
Yeah. Dick? Um, I'll just say that I'll apologize, I may not be able to make your ceremony, because I will be coming back from Houston on that day, and I doubt I'll be back in town in time.
Thank you very much. I'll let you take my place, if you'd like.
I won't be back in town in time, sorry.
I know, I know. Zach, is that it, Dick?
That's all I got.
Zach?
Yeah, just a question for everyone in this room. Did you all look at your CFD-two bills? Joe, are you still getting CFD-two bills? Fire District Two bills, no? Okay, did anyone look at them?
No.
Did you get one?
Joe wouldn't get one.
I don't get one either.
What, you don't get a Castleton Fire District Two bill?
You don't streetlights.
You wouldn't get one, that's streetlights.
Two sideville, streetlights.
That's all that is.
It's only Hydeville.
Yes.
And it's only streetlights.
It's only streetlights.
That's Fire District Two.
Only Hydeville, yes it is.
Really?
Yeah, honest.
My street has them in, not technically Hydeville. There's three new ones on my street.
You're Bonneville?
Yeah, oh, Castleton.
Careful.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, why are we just seeing them now? This is the first time that I'm seeing a CFD-two bill.
You'd have to ask.
In, in two years.
Because you'd have to ask the governmental unit, the Fire District Two, whoever that may be.
Okay, I guess, your whole point I'm trying to get to is, why are we doing this?
We're not, we don't have anything to do with it.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
But, why are we, why are we allowing, not allowing?
We can't.
But, have, is there a way to dissolve the fire districts and take it all over? That way, when somebody has a question about their bill and writes a letter back to them, they get an answer back within a few days. I'm, I'm still waiting on an answer back from, oh, early August.
You'd, you'd probably have to come in and do some research with Nedra, as to the formation and, and dissolving of the fire district.
Now, I know that checks for CFD, I forget which one it is they pay to.
You're in three.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
CFD-three. I know, I write on my check, CFD3 Incorporated, so I know it's a corporation. Who owns it?
Who owns what? Fire District 2?
No, Fire District, Fire District 3. I'd like to know who owns Fire District 2 as well. On the Fire District 2 bill, it doesn't say Incorporated, but Fire District 3.
They're both governed by a prudential committee, and you'll have to find out from the town clerk, maybe? Who the prudential committee is?
I'll cop in.
Okay.
He's on one of them.
He's on one of the, one of them.
Right, okay.
But it's not the streetlights and Hydeville.
That take care, that's that, to an extent? Not completely, but.
Just taking care of it.
Okay. Well, we're trying to refer you to the proper place to go, that's all. Anything else? I have one I'd ask. You consider making a motion to thank Jennifer Jones and Julie Finnegan, and any other volunteers. For pulling off the first Castleton days yesterday at Crystal Beach.
With pleasure, so moves.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll go on to warrants for approval.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0923R for $650. Warrant number 0923 for $154,018.95. Warrant 0919 for $5,663.60. Warrant 0912 for $5,345.58. Warrant 0910 for $22,952.72. Warrant number 0919P for $13,916. And warrant 0912P for $14,497.90.
Okay, motion to second, discussion? Start with you, Zach. No? Dick? Bob? Joe?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion, we approve warrant number 0918P for $682.97. And warrant number 0911P for $682.97.
Second? Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three views.
Dick, review this.
Whoops, guess that's the other side, Dick.
I would have probably figured it out.
Is there another purchase order, Mike, somewhere? I see warrants, and then I see purchase orders. Is something else?
I didn't see any purchase orders in my packet.
They're not in the packet.
It's probably just on there as part of the boilerplate.
Okay, it's just there, all right.
Yeah, she, kind of, same with the executive session stuff, kind of keep the same ones there.
Okay. Any recap, items to follow up? Seeing none? Okay, a motion to go into executive session. Which one would you like to do first, Mike?
Personnel.
Personnel? And that would be?
Include Ed Bolch.
Okay.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel to include the board, the town manager, and Ed Bolch.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.